Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Rye, School Board Chair. The administrative, informal, and workshop session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at 4:02 PM on this 21st day of December 2021. Pursuant to the Virginia State Health Commissioner's Order of Public Health Emergency, statewide requirement to wear masks in K-12 schools issued August 12th, and Virginia Acts of Assembly Number 1303, Chapter 456, and the CDC's guidance for K-12 schools, and School Board's reopening plan adopted August 10th of this year, it's determined physical distancing will be used in chambers as a health mitigation strategy. There's designated public speaking seating during this meeting, and members of the public as always are able to observe the meeting through live streaming on vbschools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It's this board's protocol to break at 5:30 to prepare for the formal session. School Board meeting to begin at 6:00 PM. At 5:30 will conclude unless the board votes to continue until 5:45, but no work will continue beyond that point to allow the board and administration to prepare for the formal session of the meeting at 6:00. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please announce the School Board members in attendance?
Thank you, Madam Chair. President Chambers, this is Chairwoman Rye, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Franklin, Ms. Hughes, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Holtz, Ms. Felton, Ms. Riggs, and presently on Zoom is Ms. Manning.
Thank you, and Ms. Manning is participating electronically for health reasons today. And it's my understanding Mrs. Weems will be joining via Zoom, and also my understanding that Mrs. Owens will be joining us in person very shortly. So that brings us to administrative matters and reports. Is there anything for any of you all to share? All right, and we have as a formal item here, leadership interest. It's typical for with this board each December for members who may be so interested in the School Board leadership position of Chair or Vice Chair to state their interest at this meeting. It's not necessary that you do so, but and it's not the time or we just ask that members refrain from any comment or opinions. That's not what the point of this is, and I think most of you have been through this already, so I think we all understand the process. So with that, is there anybody who would like to speak up? Perhaps it's my place to start first as the sitting chair, just to thank you all for the trust placed in me this year, and to say it's been a challenging year is an understatement. You know, we've all weathered a lot together. Every effort's been made to provide the steady leadership called for in these times. I'm always, I know I haven't always risen to the occasion, but I've really tried my best to be inclusive, to be respectful, not just from this dais, but in my replies to constituents, and there have been, we know, no shortage of emails all year, and I continue to support the work of our committees. I think that's just so key to this position. And I will, I'm happy to reach out between now and January for discussions with any or all of you, so I'll conclude there.
Is that saying that we don't need anyone?
To make it official, I am willing to continue in this role if you see fit to have me continue.
And I am as well, and I'll leave it there.
Anyone else at this time before we move ahead? All right then, number two is our schedule of meetings. And Mrs., our clerk has provided for you all, if you would care to pull out, should be at the top of your packet, a draft of the schedule of School Board meetings affirming from January to June what's already been approved, and with a few either adjustments or caveats, and then moving forward ahead through July 2022 through 2023. So this is an initial look, we realize, will allow some time now for any immediate questions or comments. This will be on the formal agenda for the first meeting in January, the organization meeting, where we will be approving the schedule.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, Ms. Manning has her hand raised.
Yes, Mrs. Manning.
Thank you. So I don't have a copy of that. It wasn't in our agenda packet, and so I would appreciate it if things are going to be put on the agenda, that they are actually in our agenda packet to review so that we're prepared to discuss it at the meeting. One item that I would like to ask to be placed on the agenda in the near future, maybe in the next month or so, is to get a staffing update if we could. I don't know if it's already on there or not, since I wasn't provided the information.
And just to clarify, Mrs. Manning, these are the actual meeting dates for the next 18 months, but that, hold that thought, because we do have, I believe, also, we're going to get to our, maybe not, Fortale, thank you, I thought, the Fortale, okay.
Fast forward that to the next comment section.
And I can just share, my base, my knowledge is that this draft of dates was just finalized today, because we were still working on a, one of them was presented to me as a question, so that much I can say, but we will certainly get you an electronic copy, and there's plenty of time between now and January 11th for you and others to ask questions and offer feedback, so thank you. I guess it's worth pointing out that as always, we have our weekly meetings in February with budget season, and right now, we've actually notated February 15th as, to clarify while in advance, that that will be the public hearing on the budget, and you know, and it's also a special meeting for more, it'll be the second time we get together since the presentation, so the superintendent estimate of needs, February 1st, this is the standard timeline, and we have regular School Board meetings, the 2nd and 4th Tuesday, the 8th and the 22nd, which of course will have a budget component, and in between February 15th is the other additional meeting in February, so anything in red are special meetings. And so there's that. We have June 7th, the superintendent evaluation was pointed out previously to us, make a note of June 3rd, and once we approve two, we'll be sure it's well communicated to the public, but that is a Monday to accommodate the graduation schedule. And again, there is history to that, but that's where that landed with that, June 13th. Anything staff wants to add with this? So like I said, take a closer look at it, and there's plenty of time before the final draft is posted in January to comment or ask questions. So now that brings us to the forecast for January, February, March.
Okay, so this is, for all of you, as you know, the third quarter forecast. This is where we have an opportunity to talk about what's on the docket for workshops, information in action. Heard Mrs. Manning's request for a staffing update. You'll notice that's on January 11th, an annual recruitment, staffing, retention, and compensation update, and so we are ready to go for that. You'll also notice an information section on that first date for January 11th on high school scheduling for 2022-23, so that's a reprise of the flexible scheduling conversation. Go on to January 25th, and by the way, I'll mention for the 11th, that's your organizational meeting, that is the only workshop item that we have on there. As a result of that, we're actually going to strike the COVID updating unless it ends up being needed, because your organizational meeting is going to take precedent. We also, on the 25th, will offer a conversation about middle school scheduling for 2022-23 that has both staffing and budget implications, and so we'll want to get some feedback from the board, and that's why that's in a workshop setting. As noted by the Chair a minute ago around the schedule of meetings, there's a special meeting called for the 1st of February, that'd be the presentation of the estimate of needs and the capital improvement program, followed on the February the 8th with a first budget and CIP workshop. What's not noted on the schedule of School Board meetings, because it's not listed as a special meeting, because it's a regular meeting, and you only have really listed under special meetings what the purpose of those meetings is, but there will also be a public hearing on February the 8th. So there'll be a presentation of the estimate of needs on the 1st, there will then be a public budget hearing on the 8th, and then as noted earlier, there'll be a second budget workshop and public hearing on the 15th, which is a special called meeting for that Then on February 22nd, as you noted, there will be another budget workshop. We'll also provide a compass of 2025 mid-year update, and we'll look forward to bringing you a conversation about Project Search, which is an innovative partnership between Virginia Beach City Public Schools and the Navy. We will have another special meeting, as was noted earlier, on March the 1st. That is where we anticipate the board would need to adopt the School Board budget, so that we can transmit that in time to City Council for them to take appropriate action after deliberation. On March the 8th, at the moment, we have an update on work-based learning initiatives and our work around being future-ready. And on the 22nd, we anticipate a general assembly session legislative review and an update to the board on any progress being made on the development of an equity plan. So that is the quarterly forecast. There are some, there is some space available in there, and of course, as you can see in format, as always, as it goes across, there's opportunity for information items to be added, and there's action items already anticipated. And then there's always opportunity and space left in case the board has other topics that they would like to see added during the third quarter. And as a reminder, this is a living document and does change from time to time based on agenda planning needs.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Mrs. Hughes.
Yes, looking at these together, I do recall some discussion about either the 11th or the 25th, or both of them, starting earlier. I just wanted to get that on my calendar and just clarify that.
I believe you're referring to January 25th for the superintendent mid-year evaluation, and you're correct, and that's a 3 o'clock start time.
Thank you.
A closed session for that.
Just wanted to make sure I wrote that down, thanks.
Dr. Spence, so going back to January 11th, because it was noted last night that there would be an, we were talking about two dates for the next, for these subsequent COVID discussions, and the 11th and the 24th were mentioned, so is, can consideration be given to make, putting on information, the COVID update, to take it out, to avoid the organization meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And my second question is, is it the intent to have, now we see on this quarterly forecast two different dates listed for the public hearing, so if staff could qualify, clarify for us?
You're going to have two public hearings, so our intention would be that you would have two public hearings, and that's not out of line with what we've done in the past, but you would have a public hearing in the two meetings following the presentation of the estimate of needs, and that would give you two opportunities to hear from the public as you're having conversations about the estimate of needs. The first one would be, as was noted, on February the 8th, and then the second one would be on February the 15th. Then you would have your final conversation on February the 22nd as board around the budget, with the understanding and anticipation that you would get to your March 1st special meeting and prepared to adopt the budget.
And I certainly don't object, but my understanding is that the two meetings in the past, one was December and one was in February, and so if there's been a conscious decision to have two of them, and one of them would be incorporated with a regular meeting, that's fine, I just wanted to be sure that we're all on the same page.
Well, that's what we're recommending. If you have, if the board has different direction, you just need to let us know.
Mrs. Anderson.
So normally at an organizational meeting, we don't have a workshop, but I do see that there are some workshop items on the 11th that we need to be addressed, so do we plan to do workshop directly after the formal meeting, or are we planning to convene early for the formal meeting, and then, I mean, how are we going to handle that?
So the organizational function itself typically just begins, I want to say, I don't know, 30 minutes earlier, I have to go back and look, I don't have the record in front of me, but it doesn't, it's not, I don't think we typically dramatically alter the start time of your formal meeting, we just in the past have not necessarily had a workshop prior to the formal meeting on an organizational meeting date. The annual recruitment, staffing, and retention update is a little late this year, because we wanted to do, we actually had it scheduled and ready, but we wanted to do that healthcare update, and then we wanted to talk to the PPMC about some of the staffing issues, and so this will come forward, and we think it's really important, and it's a substantive presentation, and so we request the opportunity to have a workshop on the 11th to talk about it.
I don't have a problem with that. I'm just trying to figure out how logistically we're going to do that without a chair elected. Will you be presiding over the workshop, Dr. Spence?
I think we amended the bylaws to allow the prior chair to stay on until a new chair is elected, so that you can get things like agenda and contracts and things signed, so we amended the bylaw to allow for that.
Because I think that came up last year as well.
Okay.
But thank you for raising the issue, because with agenda planning, we'll be cognizant of that when we determine the timeline, I mean, we're meeting for agenda planning today, so that we keep that in mind, when we establish the times.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else right now? And now that brings us to our Building Utilization Committee update, and we have both Mr. Arnold and Ms. Melissa Ingram, our demographer, who now faces us from the podium. Welcome.
I now have my, I now have my mic turned on. Good afternoon, my name is Melissa Ingram, I'm the School Division Demographer, and I'm here to discuss the Building Utilization Committee and the annual review conducted for school year 21-22. The Building Utilization Committee met this year on December 9th, 2021, with many of the members here today, Laura Hughes, School Board at Large, is the BUC Chair, Ms. Carolyn Weems, School Board District 4, with Bayside, Ms. Jessica Owens, School Board District 3, with Rose Hall, are our School Board members, Jack Freeman, Chief Operations Officer for VBCPS, and Dr. Eugene Saltner, Chief Schools Officer for VBCPS, are our school staff, and Tara Campbell, President of the Virginia Beach Council of PTAs, and Joan Davis, Treasurer of Virginia Beach Council of Civic Organizations, are our committee members. The BUC is put forth by Policy 5-14, which requires an annual review of enrollment trends, as well as any recommendations for redistricting from this committee. It is, it's important to note that this year, at our annual meeting, we did not recommend any redistricting for this year, however, we did review the important factors set forth by policy to consider for any rezoning, and I'll just go over them very quickly from the policy here. Optimal utilization of space, the desire to keep areas commonly known as subdivisions or neighborhoods together, the need to develop long-term solutions that support limiting redistricting of individual students to one time at each level, construction considerations, new subdivisions or scheduled school renovations, the desire to reduce or eliminate the number of middle schools and high schools with divided feeder patterns, if at all possible, transportation considerations are also taken into account, including non-transportation zones, hazards, and redirection of the number of students riding buses, the costs associated with various options considered, the impact of enrollment changes upon course offerings, equipment needs or building modifications, and one of the most important ones is the desire to redistrict as few schools and students as possible in order to allow the community to have a consistent school enrollment. Okay, and our next slide here is showing a map of the density of students in the City of Virginia Beach. This is the lighter yellow areas, as you can see, this is our city outline here, the lighter yellow areas show less density of students per square mile. You can see these are areas which are in the southern end of the city, which have lower infrastructure available, in areas near bases or natural water features. Our darker blue areas are areas with the highest concentration of students' residences there. This is in the southwest area of the city, as well as the center of the city. The committee looked at additional trends that impact the density of students here as we see them. These trends include new housing, shared housing, and homeless populations, which have a direct impact on the density of students and where they might attend school. Other important factors to consider as well are the demographics of our area. Household size, for example, has been decreasing for us in Virginia Beach. We used to be at a 2.7 household size, we're now at a 2.5, roughly 20 years after the 2000 census. Affordability is another factor for our area with our cost per square foot at about $165 per square foot, which is about $20 more than the regional average of square foot cost, and considering rent and other things like that. Another consideration is also our demographics, and the fact that Virginia Beach is a place where some military that have come through have now, will now retire there, so you see in more of an aging population in our area compared to the rest of the area in Hampton Roads. Okay, so looking at this, this is a table here of live birth data. This is pretty much the beginning of how we look at enrollment trends and projections in Virginia Beach. Interesting to note, we're going to look at a graph in just a little bit, showing our highest peak school year is 1997 to 98. This chart here starts with the birth year, 1992, where we see students born five years before they're entering kindergarten, and this is also the peak of live births in Virginia Beach, at 7,687 students born that reside in Virginia Beach for that year. You can see the column in the middle there shows whether or not this number has increased or decreased from the year before. Most of the trend from that 1992 peak is showing decline in live births, until we get to our current school year 21-22, where we're at 5,918 children were born in the year 2016, where our kindergarteners are coming from this year. You can see in the next four years, we continue to have declining live births, until we get to, the most recently available data is 2019, and we had 5,458 children born that year, which is a total decline from our peak of 2,229 children born per year that reside in Virginia Beach. So it's important data to understand, as we look at our next table here, which is our student membership. So looking at our student membership here, you can see our most recent historical trends on the left, the table is broken up into elementary, middle, high school, and then division-wide totals. On the very right-hand side, under the green bar, is our current school membership. You can see our student membership this year for K-12 is 63,698 students. We did have a decline of 138 students, which was actually very promising for our coming back from the pandemic, particularly when you compare it to the year before, we saw an unprecedented decline of 2,980 students, the year that the pandemic was for the whole school year, with children entering. After that, March 2019, we had the start of it, and then September 20, March 2020, and then September 2020, we had students come back with a little bit of a loss. Our elementary schools, we have 28,335 students, middle schools 14,956, and high schools 20,407 students. One of the items we're going to discuss is the implementation of full-day kindergarten, and just as with live births, if you look at the kindergarten grade level from the left of the chart to the right, you can see that in 2016-17, when we were still implementing our full-day kindergarten, we only had roughly 4,431 kindergarteners. If you keep continuing to the right, along the data, you can see until 2019-20, we were almost, we were getting to the 5,000 range per grade level for our kindergarteners there, and unfortunately, then the pandemic hit in 2021, where we had a decline of kindergarteners, we had 4,077 kindergarteners come in. We were very hopeful when we saw the numbers come in this year for first grade. If you look at the red bars there, you can see our kindergarteners coming in this year again, we were happy, we had an increase of roughly 600, 4,592 kindergarteners. But what we do when we, when we look at membership and we look at membership projections, we follow the student cohort, so that student grade level as they continue through the school division. So in 2021, those 4,077 kindergarteners, we had 600 additional kindergarteners show up in first grade. So from that same student cohort, that's very promising that we're coming, we're seeing a return of students from the pandemic coming into our Virginia Beach City Public Schools. You can see that in total elementary as well, we did not have a decline this year, we had an increase of 222 students, which is very important for the work that we do as we follow those student cohorts through the grade levels. It's important to get them in early. Looking at this pattern again, for fifth grade, our rising fifth graders last year to sixth graders this year, we had a much larger retention rate and growth of our sixth grade level there, where we, in the past, have lost more in the sixth grade there, we were almost flat, so that was also very promising. And from 8th to 9th grade, we had almost a 500 student increase coming into the school division in their high school years, with 5,497 9th graders coming into the school So this is a, so we just looked at our K-12 enrollment, which is very important for budget purposes, however, the Building Utilization Committee is charged with looking at everyone who utilizes the building. So it's important to understand that in addition to the 63,698 K-12 students, we have 1,603 students this year that are served in other grade levels and programs, including ECSE, which is our half-day preschool program, Pre-K VPI, which is our four-year-old preschool program, and then SESET programs throughout all grade levels. So you can see where, for our building utilization purposes, we're looking at a total enrollment of 65,301 students. I'm going to show you a graph in a little bit, and it's, I'm going to go over some historical I'm gonna show you a graph in a little bit and it's I'm gonna go over some historical factors first here that are listed. One of which is um our school closure. So in in school year oh nine ten, the building utilization committee. Did some work as a result of some of our decline and closed Plaza Elementary School. Another thing that the building utilization committee has been working on, um we have three hundred fifteen portables. Removed division-wide in the last twenty years as well, which is very, they they did a great job during our high-growth years. Able to be used efficiently and moved around. However, that is almost equated to to losing about eight elementary schools, the the uh the three hundred fifteen portables. Full-day kindergarten implementation, we talked about that a little bit when we looked at the data. Um in school year sixteen seventeen, we had only twenty-three percent of our schools utilizing full-day kindergarten. Uh school year nineteen twenty, we had nineteen ninety-four percent. And then last year, we had all of our elementary schools offering full-day kindergarten. And you could see from the data we just looked at with the response of the community was in terms of offering that program, additional students did come into the division. And then our preschool, pre-K and CSET programs, it's important to note that these programs um are. Are now more structured to be managed by the school division where they might have been managed through other through other areas like the YMCA. So in oh-three, oh-four, uh state reporting was required for these programs. Oh-seven, oh-eight, um early discoveries, which was the precursor to the pre-K VPI. Um started to be reported to the state. And in sixteen seventeen, um pre-K VPI takes over that early discovery from YMCA. So those are some of the additional students and additional space needs we have in our buildings today. And then I think it's just also considering the time and the the unprecedented pandemic. To look at some of the virtual options that have been offered. So in school year nineteen twenty, when the pandemic started, um we had a hundred percent of the students uh going virtual when that in in March. And that was statewide. In school year twenty twenty-one, Virginia Beach did offer a virtual option as well as our face-to-face option. With roughly forty percent of our student population um taking advantage of that. And this year, we um the virtual option was offered in Virginia Beach through Virtual Virginia. And roughly one point five four percent of students um do currently attend this school year virtually. Which doesn't seem like a lot, but when you you take into consideration that that's almost a hu- a thousand students. That might have gone somewhere else with all the new homeschool options that are out there, rather than stayed into their familiar VBCPs. It's an important thing to know. So we'll take a look now, this data is um shown on a graph here. So this is both our historical membership data, which we had a snapshot of earlier. And then those historical factors that we were just talking about. So you can see in ninety-seven, ninety-eight, the school division peaked at seventy-seven thousand six hundred students. For those ten, those twelve years in between Plaza closure and our peak enrollment. We had roughly a ten point four percent decline over those twelve years. To sixty-nine thousand five hundred students in in grades K through twelve. In the following twelve years, which is where we are now from that Plaza closure. We had only an eight point four percent decline over those same twelve years. However, when you take the pandemic out of the data, our decline was only um three point eight percent. Over those over those ten years before the pandemic, which averages out to about a decline of two hundred seventy students per year. And comparing that with the four point six percent decline during last year and this year of the pandemic. Um which we lost two thousand nine hundred eighty students in the first year and only one hundred thirty-eight students this current year. For where we currently are now at sixty-three thousand six hundred ninety-eight students. Or the of sixty-five thousand three hundred students utilizing our buildings with those extra programs. Okay, and these are some building utilizations charts. I'm sorry. So next on your slides are our building utilization pu- charts. It's important to note that division-wide. We are eight point three percent, um our membership is eight point three percent of optimum capacity. Our elementary schools are eight point three percent under capacity. Middle schools, six point eight percent under capacity and high schools, six percent under capacity. These are all within the plus or minus ten percent utilization range, which is considered acceptable. You can see in red there, which um many of you might be used to during the years of growth. Ten percent or more, we would we would indicate a a a red designation on the school in terms of they might need some relief. And then um in the yellow there, it's if if they're under ten percent under capacity. It's also important to note for these tables here, some of the committee work that's been done to make sure that we are um informed of the space needs. At each building because they do vary by program there. So if you look at the elementary school data on the very right, you see some of our Title One schools there are recognized. Title One schools require additional pull-out resources. They might have lower class sizes, so there's additional space needs there. We also have shown our K to three ratio, um which the highest would be a twenty-five to one, which it is at grades four and five. However, those schools who are struggling a little bit more, they might have a lower K to three ratio and then. Require a little bit more space du- due to the additional need of those students. And then we also have our self-contained students shown, and those vary as well by school population. Which also require additional space needs. Also listed here are those programs we spoke about, the the preschool programs ECSC and pre-K VPI. As well as our CSET programs, which are is not just at the elementary school level, but also middle school and high school levels as well. So we we um and and in line with the um factors that go into deciding whether or not to redistrict. We often will watch schools to see um if they will continue to increase. And have a need for rezoning or continue to decline and also possibly have a a need for rezoning in order to have our most efficient use of buildings. One school to note that has some additional space is Bird Neck Elementary School. They're roughly twenty percent under capacity. However, it's important to note that they um they're they have a nineteen to one ratio in their school. And they also um serve the ECSC and pre-K VPI population, so that additional room is able to support those additional programs. A similar school, Glenwood Elementary School, it's the same exact footprint. Their enrollment is much higher. Their K to three ratio is twenty-five to one versus Bird Neck, which is much lower. And they also are able to um just to to add programs to their their school as well as ECSC, pre-K VPI and CSET programs. Some of the schools that we're watching, um you might see some five portables there. There's a couple um at the elementary school level. Centerville and Lanstown are two of them. In the most recent years, they have been declining in population. Centerville actually lost a portable several years ago. And so we're just rather than rezone, then we watch to see if the increase or decline will keep occurring. Point of view, um we're also watching Point of View Elementary School. They are at eight point three percent of capacity, have gotten some additional portables last year. And the committee did great work in terms of when we looked at some new housing trends um in nineteen twenty. We reserved a new housing development um to Pembroke Elementary School, which had additional space. And in this way, we're able not to impact any existing neighborhoods or existing students that might go to Point of View. But still relieve the school from those additional students that would have showed up, generated from that housing, housing development. Excuse me. Okay, so now looking at this, um I'm just gonna click once, thank you. Now looking at this data on some maps, we're gonna look at each grade level here. So at the elementary school level, we have fifty-three elementary school zones with fifty-five zone schools, keeping in mind that tri-campus. Is comprised of three schools at three different grade levels and one citywide school all donation. That's twenty-nine thousand seven hundred twenty students in grades preschool to five and CSET. And we currently have no elementary schools more than ten percent over capacity. At the middle school level, we have thirteen middle school zones with fourteen zone schools. With Bayside Middle School and Bayside Sixth serving the Bayside Middle School attendance zone. We have two citywide schools, Old Donation School and Renaissance Academy at the middle school level. And we have fifteen thousand thirty-nine students in grades six through eight and CSET. With no middle schools uh more than ten percent over capacity. And at the high school level, we have eleven high school attendance zones. Um eleven zone schools of which eight, eight have academies and one have a charter school. Uh the committee also looks at the breakdown of our academies per attended zone as well to make sure there's parity. Uh we have one citywide school Renaissance Academy, two pull-out tech centers and one pull-out environmental studies center. Uh so for a total of twenty thousand five hundred forty-two students in grades nine to twelve in CSET. We have no Skype high schools more than ten percent over capacity. Okay, so looking at this graph, once again, we're gonna just turn our focus over to the projection. Um and those are our blue bars over to the right. So we're projecting slight increase of students again for the next two years as we recover the from the pandemic. And then slight decline roughly after that. By the end of that, if you take a line, you should be able to get back to in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Where we were projecting in the past roughly sixty-four thousand students plus or minus. We're hopeful in the numbers that we saw returning this year, you know, we would have not liked to not have had a decline. But again, following that student cohort um was was very promising data to show that we are actually. Well, hopefully coming back from the pandemic much stronger and we we're still serving our students in the best way that we can. Okay, and I'd like to see if there's any questions. Now that was a lot of data, but.
Yes, and before we go to the queue, if I I just would like to offer Mrs. Hughes as the committee chair to see if you at this moment in time have any comments to add.
I do not think there is anything that I could add. Ms. Ingram is incredibly thorough. She's very good at what she does.
Thank you, yes. Except for clicking the buttons, but yeah, I'll work on it. All right, so we have Mrs. Melnick and then Mrs. Anderson.
And Ms. Manny has her hand raised.
Okay. So I think Glenwood has stayed the same since nineteen ninety when it opened, minus the starting year when they had twenty-five portables outside when it was still through sixth grade. Gosh, I was one of fourteen first-grade teachers at that school, so always very full there for some reason. You showed some live birth data and um. The decline um has been from ninety-seven, ninety-eight. And um I guess that can keep, I mean, that's attributed to live births, but is there something else also?
Um a lot of the demographic reasons I mentioned as well, um you know. Unfortunately, one of the things we're finding in our area is affordability as well. So um we look at, when we look at new housing, we look at student generation rates. With military housing having um more than one child showing up per ten houses. And apartments having the least number of students show up um per ten houses. So we look at the type of housing development. That is coming in and what families with growing families might want to buy. We see our single family um historically has has been just right underneath military housing. So one of the issues we have in Virginia Beach is we're kind of growing out of land a little bit. So we're seeing redevelopment of apartment units. Now those apartment units will still be generating students, um as we saw with the rezoning we did from Point of View to Pembroke. However, it's not at the same rate that we've seen with single-family housing. And so and so the other part of that is too, um you know, families that might be looking for a more affordable. Newer, single-family home might look at areas outside of Virginia Beach to raise their family. The other reason for that too demographically is we are, you know, a community with a lot of retirees in it. People will sometimes move here in the beginning of their tours militarily. Go go do other tours and then come back and maybe retire here when their children are a little bit older. And then might not move out again. So that house that um that family is residing in is not generating any students after that. So those are two of the biggest pieces, I think, um in our area.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Anderson.
So one of the things that stood out to me was Corporate Landing Elementary, and you didn't mention it. And yet it's at twenty, almost it's twenty-four point nine percent over capacity. I'm sorry.
Under, under, yes.
Under capacity. So um and that's a large school, so. I mean, I, are there any other schools around that area that po- could possibly be rezoned? Into Corporate Landing, um I mean, I hate to think that we have to do rezoning, but. When you're under utilizing a building by twenty-five percent, I mean, almost twenty-five percent, that that's not a real good utilization utilization of space.
So one of the things to think about, if you look at the K to three ratio for Corporate Landing, it's at twenty, twenty to one. So where some classrooms um and other schools might have twenty-five students in a Corporate Landing. Has the need due to their student population to have only twenty students in their K to three classrooms. That does eat up additional space, um so they do have those additional space needs. Um and you can also see they also um accommodate um some CSET students. CSET does try to keep their students, you know, close to their attendant zones, but they're also looking for buildings that have. The ability to um not just have their main classroom, but also all the pull-out resources that are involved with that for special education.
Okay, so we have to keep that in mind.
Yes, but but I agree with you. In terms of a rezoning, what we do when we do look at that is. We will go and look at the neighboring schools, just as we did with Point of View, where Point of View was over. And we looked at all the neighboring, it's usually a domino effect when you rezone.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, and so we look, we'll, and even though Pembroke does have quite a bit of special ed as well. You know, we made sure that um those students would fit in there and everything fit great. But you are correct, when we rezone, um or if we are to rezone any school, you're looking at. All the schools north, south, east and west of it to see who might be able to either take students from the school you're rezoning. Or add students in this case to the school you're rezoning. And you're exactly right, um you know, programs do, especially at the middle and high school level. You know, programs can be impacted if you don't have enough students for them, so.
So I I didn't look real close, but it's Corporate Landing uh middle school, yeah, it is eleven point two percent under capacity, so. The entire building has some space, yes. But, okay.
Yeah, you're correct.
I just wanted to point that out, because it just, it, you know, twenty-five percent just kind of stood out to me, and I was like, whoa, wait a minute, you know, that's a lot of space, but. You know, you've made a good um explanation as to why that space is needed and how we're utilizing it.
And at the elementary school level, our student enrollment is so low. That sometimes, you know, one twenty-five student classroom. Might completely take it out of under capacity or or out of over capacity. So that's one of the reasons that we really watch it. Year after year, instead of saying, oh, gosh, you know, they just got an extra, you know, twenty kids this year, should we rezone them? We try to watch and see what the trend is doing.
How many students are in a hearing impaired program at Corporate Landing Elementary?
I don't know that number off the top of, oh, mind, we can get that information to you.
Okay, Mrs. Manning, you're on.
Thank you. The historic and projected enrollment piece um over the last couple of decades. You know, not including these last couple of years, but just the last couple of decades here in Virginia Beach. The decline, is that unique to Virginia Beach, or are we seeing that same type of decline in public school districts across the state?
That's a very good point. Um we have been seeing that decline, like I said, it's a stu- uh throughout the country, actually. Um it's the student cohort that you're following, so even at the community college level, the college level. You're starting to see that decline in demographics, you know, back in the sixties. U.S. we used to have um three point three was your household size. Virginia Beach right now is two point five again, which went down from two point seven just twenty years ago. So families just aren't having as many children. And um that that is really what we're seeing nationwide. So that is a very good point. It's not just true to Virginia Beach.
I do think.
Thank you.
I do think too, though, there's also some geographical um components to that. If you look across Virginia right now, you do have some school divisions that are continuing to grow, so particularly in the northern Virginia area. And around Richmond, and so I think you would probably find if you looked in um. A lot of the larger metropolitan areas that you're gonna continue to see, we have been at least seeing growth in. we have been at least seeing growth in geographically. That's been a conversation at the state level about how, you know, how that's happening. I do think, however, what'll be interesting to find out is what the nature of remount work does to that, because the, the poll was that people had to move to the cities to work. And now that may or may not be as true as we move forward, and whether or not then we'll see, um, enrollment shifts towards more rural or suburban districts.
Okay, thank you for that, and Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that detail, this detailed, um, report. It really enlightened a, a lot of what we are doing or aren't doing. But I just like asked, asked you, um, have we incorporated the complete renovation of Atlantis Apartments? And what that has done to our students, because some of those students were displaced and some of the, they were placed in, uh, hotels too at that time. So ha, ha, is they of this? Does this report, uh, reflect what is happening in Atlantis? And whether or not we'll be getting those students back and are we in touch with them as well?
Yeah, so, um, I don't mean to speak out of turn, I was involved in some meetings with transportation. Transportation was working to accommodate those students. My understanding is a lot of the renovation work has been going. But yes, I believe those students, you know, they, they are in that student cohort for Atlantis Apartments, and, and they were getting, um, help from transportation in, in order to accommodate them from the moves that they had to do while the renovation was occurring.
I do appreciate you touching on that transportation, because that was a far cry in the community that those students were not being met with transportation, nor were they receiving accommodations at that time. So it is a complete renovation of Atlantis Apartment. They're actually moving families out and placing them in hotels. And I just need to know how we, how we are engaging with that, part of that, uh, transition with those students. There is a large population of students in Atlantis. And Dr. Robertson is shaking his head.
So, Ms. Felton, that's a really good question. And so we made a point when we met with the planning team, uh, that's doing all the work at Atlantis, to provide those students that were displaced, transportation to their home schools. Because they're doing it in phases, which has been really helpful to us, because instead of looking at an entire neighborhood of, of students, we're looking at groups of students that we are then transporting to keep them in their same school.
Okay.
So I will try to connect, especially with the civility, because that was some, that was a component that was not, uh, really clear with the parents of what was happening. So this is a good report at this time to let me know what we are doing and how we're interacting with that, because it was, thank you, thank you, Dr. Robertson.
Okay, anybody else?
All right. Have a Merry Christmas, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
So colleagues, um, I'm inclined to recommend adjourning the workshop and beginning. Mrs. Lanetti, are you prepared if, for us to begin the closed session?
Yes, ma'am, I can do that.
So we will, so, so we are concluding this workshop, and I would.
Would, do we need to adjust yet the T, which word are the TV, are we first read to go into closed?
Read into closed, then we'll shut the TV down?
All right, so Mrs. Melnick, would you please read the motion? Thank you.
I move that the school board recess into closed session in accordance with the exemptions to open meetings law set forth in Code of Virginia, two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one, Part A, Paragraph seven and eight, as amended. A seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. And A eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss pending or probable litigation matters and the retention of outside legal counsel. I need a motion.
Okay. A motion, Mrs. Anderson, a second. Mrs. Franklin, okay, all in favor, show a raised hand.
We have nine eyes.
Thank you, and, and just a reminder, we're, our, our zooming colleagues will join us at six o'clock for the formal meeting.
Actually, Madam Chair, I said I move, so that, that should be me first, and then Mrs. Franklin second. Or Mrs. Anderson, I suppose, since she did it first, okay? So Melnick, Anderson, for the record.
Mrs. Melnick, would you please read the certification of closed session?
Whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vo, vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-two-D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Motion to approve?
Some move.
Mrs.
Some move.
Anderson and the second, Mrs. Franklin. Okay, all in favor, please show a raised hand.
Madam Chair, we have nine eyes.
There you go. All right, so the certification is approved. Thank you, and we will be reconvening at six o'clock for the formal meeting.